This meeting to order. It is, well, I don't know what time it is because my computer screen's weird. It is 7 o'clock straight up on November 19th. This is the city council meeting for Oak Ridge. And we are both live in person at Willamette Activity Center as well as Zooming online. We're calling this meeting to order. Please rise or do as you appropriately do for the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Trudy. We certainly appreciate it. Jackie, will you call the role of councilors?
Mayor Holston?
Here.
Councilor McCallum?
Here.
Councilor Whitney?
Here.
Councilor Forcombe?
Here.
Councilor Howard?
Here.
That was Kenyon, I'm here.
Yeah, Jackie, you're kind of muffled, so I don't know why that is. But if you're talking through your mask, you probably don't have to if you're alone.
Okay, I'm not, I'll figure it out.
I'm teasing. Thank you very much. Do we have any additions, corrections, or adjustments, Brian?
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
Okay. Council, do you have any additions, corrections, or adjustments? Okay. We're going to move to public comments. Brian, are there individuals at the WAC that would like to make public comment in person?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Kingsbury is here, actually in front of the screen.
All right. And also, I want to ask how many people we have. I'm taking a look at the participant list here, so just trying to get an idea.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay. Okay, great. And what I will do is take comment from the WAC first, and then I will go down the list as I see it and ask if you... I don't know whether you want to make public comment or you're just viewing, so don't be surprised if I ask you and I'm not putting you on the spot. So Joy, would you like to go first, please?
Sure. My name is Joy Kingsbury, and I live at 47726.
Yeah, here, she'll have to get closer.
Slide up maybe a little bit, what you're comfortable with. You can do that.
Take my desk off to talk. Anyway, I just want to add my voice to those who would like to see the march proceed with the proposed lettering for our water tank. And I feel that you would probably all agree after having thought it over and realize that a burden to hand is kind of a valuable thing. And our imaginative creative artists can usually find a great way to embellish any lettering that would be available to them. And I think that you will approve of the wisdom of having our name, Oak Ridge, up there immediately. And I hope that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy. I appreciate you coming down to the WAC. All right, let me pull up my participant list here.
Mayor, we've got one more.
Okay.
Joy, can you watch, see for audio so he can get the camera?
Good morning, council, afternoon, evening. This is Audie Spleen, 47587, Teller Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon. And I thought it was already decided with council that they were going to put out to the public around here if anybody wanted to put any different signs on that. It was already passed by council. Now come to find out it's come back up that it isn't. I don't understand. Can you please help? Because is what council says? Or did somebody bring up a new motion?
Okay. Can I answer that, Audie? I can't tell if you're done because you're ways away from my camera here. So let me say this. As yes, we agreed in council and we voted back in May, and we agreed at our last meeting that we would continue with what we had put out in May to look for the cost and timeline and whether or not there was an artist that would submit a mural for the tower to see what that was, so we would have that information to make a decision upon and not move forward with putting the words "Oak Ridge" or "Oak Ridge welcomes you" on the tower. This is public comment, Audie. And so what we are hearing is Joy's urging the council to reconsider that. But there is no motion that has been made, and there is no agenda item currently on.
Okay, thank you, because I think...
Does that make sense?
Yes, I think it should stay with the original motion that we should have our artist submit and go from there. And if no artist submits, then we have the options to go back to. But to jump into something when a motion has been made and we need to give our public time, our artists and stuff, time to put forth their ideas and stuff. Otherwise, we'll give us the motion.
Thank you, Audie. Is there anyone else at the WAC that has any... wants to make any comment there? No?
Thank you very much, council.
You're welcome, Audie.
No one more at the WAC, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I'm going to pull up my participant list and going to go down. So I see hands raised, which is great. I will start with those that are raised. The first hand raised I see on mine is Sissy Kutchin.
Hey, okay, I'm here.
Okay, I hear you.
Okay. I am Sissy Kutchin, and I live on Meadow Way. And I am speaking tonight to respectfully request council to please reconsider the decision of your last meeting not to paint the Highway 58 water tower. My impression was council is concerned for the future, worrying an artist would not be able to work on the water tower if a sign were painted there first. I would like to assure you, as a professional artist, anything painted on the water tower now would not preclude an artist from painting there in the future. It would be very easy for words that are printed there to easily be painted over or even simply incorporated into future work. However, because there's no money for an artist, by leaving the tower blank while waiting years for funding for art, we are missing a valuable business opportunity to market our town by welcoming visitors. It is a common and also wise business practice to welcome customers when they walk in your door. As a small business owner, I know it is crucial to maximize every avenue we have to market ourselves. In the case of the water tower, we have a philanthropic donation to write welcoming words there. Oak Ridge works incredibly hard to get grants and to even find volunteers. We are not used to philanthropy. By not accepting this philanthropic gift, we are discouraging future projects funded in the same way. We simply cannot afford to do this. We need philanthropists, we need volunteers, we need grant money. Every possible revenue stream is much needed here. We cannot afford to turn down any reasonable opportunity which comes to us. One of the hardest things for a business is to get customers in the door. Oak Ridge is in a very unique situation because they have a rather affluent demographic of potential customers coming here, or at least a demographic with disposable income to mountain bike. Unfortunately, many businesses do not sustain here, and yet the town is full of people who are very talented and have many salable skills. What is needed to succeed is marketing, which drives interest and invites commerce. I know, after sitting through many town council meetings, this is an economically depressed town. Also, I know from these meetings, it is the desire of the council to promote the livelihood of their citizens. Usual support comes in the form of patronizing venues and supporting events, but the water tower is a rare marketing opportunity to welcome visitors to our town. In this way, we are helping business with a very expensive and often unaffordable aspect of running a small business, which is marketing, and in our case, capitalizing on the tourism which comes here. Because of this, I am asking you, and in fact, I am imploring the council, to please reconsider their stance on the water tower. Please know, no matter the signage, an artist can still use that tower as a blank canvas when funds eventually become available for artwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Sissy. I appreciate your remarks. Let me move on to the next hand I see raised, which is Robert Killen. Robert?
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members, for allowing me to present tonight. My name is Robert Killen. I'm the director of the Lane Small Business Development Center. I'm headquartered at LCC. I serve all of Lane County personally. I'm in Coburg, if you need to record that. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to help me solve a problem that's been repeated by business owners across the country for decades, which is simply this: When my business needs help, I can't find it, whether they're talking about funding, or regulation, or just help. And unfortunately, because we are all defined by the stories that stick, this is the story that defines the entire business resource ecosystem, from chambers to city staff and certainly to my organization. But here's another truth. There's no roadblock a business might be facing that doesn't have someone whose job it is to get them through it. The big picture is we don't suffer a lack of resources, we suffer a lack of belief in those resources. And that we can fix, and here's how. At the SBDC, I've built a very simple searchable database called Lane Business Link. It's a database built to house all the public and nonprofit entities that provide direct services to businesses in Lane County. And while it does exceedingly well as a client-facing tool, the greater value is on the agency side. So imagine a local business calls the city to ask about help with government contracting, which is not something that you do. You don't help businesses with that. If nobody in the offices knows of a resource to refer them to, what's going to happen? Unfortunately, probably nothing, and the business is left believing that help doesn't exist. With Lane Business Link, a quick search would identify agencies that do help with that and the contact information to connect them to. As resource partners use the tool to help businesses, we will collectively increase our understanding of and confidence in the enormous array of supports that are available to businesses throughout our region. Ultimately, the tool both facilitates and proves a new story, which is this: When your business needs help, we'll help you get it. Tonight, I have two simple asks of you. The first is to be a Lane Business Link partner, which means to have a page on the site. I can send the link through the city so that you can explore this on yourself. I've already populated a page for the chamber in Oak Ridge. To use the tool, have your staff have it on their desktop, so when people do come in and ask questions that you don't know the answer to right away, you can find the answer, and then embrace this new story. Embrace the commitment that when somebody comes in asking for help, you will help them find the answer because you'll have the tool available. The second thing is that I would like to request a statement of support from the city. If you think this is a good idea, I would love to get just one or two sentences of support for this so that I can share it at a partner summit, which is coming up on December 10th, and the city administrator should receive information about that and can forward it to you. And so that I can help propagate this new story across all of Lane County. Ultimately, we want to change the narrative from one of scarcity to one of abundance, that as resource partners throughout the area, if you have a problem, business owner, we can help you find it. If we can do that, we can change everything about business resources and the sense and optimism of businesses throughout Lane County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. And you have provided that information to the city administrator so that we can follow through?
Yes. Well, I know that I have sent one. I will follow this up with additional information.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Let's see. Okay. Rick, are you at the WAC or are you on my screen? You're on my screen. Okay. I see you. Trudy, I see a blue hand up.
Oh. Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm encouraging council to stick with the original motion made by Councilor Whitney regarding the water tower because I think that it's very important to follow through. And with changing things in the middle of the game, it's like changing a referee that's keeping a game organized without chaos. Our city's not going to go without any business if it stays blank. And who says that an artist is going to actually charge? Maybe we could find somebody that would volunteer. I just think that it's really important to follow through because we've had a lot of history of not following through and of manipulating motions and things when they're already through the process of being a motion, being voted on, and being passed or failed. The flip-flop is... That inconsistency, I think, is not helping our trust in leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. Let me get back to my screen here. So I am going to just go down this. I see someone that is labeled as Big D. Is this a person who wants to make a comment? If so, please unmute yourself and do so.
This is Dylan Sanders, and I don't really have much of a comment. I was observing, but since you asked, hello, everybody, and I support the original motion.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so now I see David Helton. David, did you want to make a comment?
No. My apologies for that.
Not a problem. You didn't do anything other than you're on my list here. I have a... I keep going down the list. Catherine Roach. Hold on, hold on. Linda Cammerer, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Linda Cammerer, 48175 East First Street. And yes, my comment is on the water tower project. First of all, I want to recognize Councilor Hollitt and Councilor Kenyon's reference to the council meeting back in May where the topic of what artwork would be painted on the tower was discussed. I can understand why you tabled the proposal to paint "Oak Ridge welcomes you on the tower." But then again, here we are. This is a privately funded project, pretty much ready to go, which would result in a positive message our community would see every day and pass through traffic would begin to notice. I think this would be good for business, as others have said. And I think it would be good for citizen morale because it enhances our front porch. What I mean by front porch is along the Highway 58 corridor. Many of us travel it, and of course, visitors travel it as they pass through, and they get an impression of our town. And I think just that simple message, "Oak Ridge welcomes you," is a very, very good message for us to be sending out at this moment. We all need something positive these days. And it also fits in easily with several of the council's strategic plan goals. One of them is, and I quote, "Provide an atmosphere that is open and welcoming to businesses and economic growth." So not to belabor the point, but the choices before you are several. One is whether to forgive errors and get the project moving to completion or to rely on an earlier decision to put the design out for bid to local artists. Not an easy choice, but I'd encourage you to weigh both and then make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I'm going down my list here. Hold on. I see Mick. Mick? You show as Mick and Cindy. Do you know how to unmute yourself? I believe you're on the phone. And I'll give you a minute here. Okay. We can come back to you, and if you manage to get yourself... You hear me, and you managed to get yourself unmuted so that you can speak, then please do so.
Hello?
Hi. Hi, Mick, I hear you.
Hi. Holy crap, the 21st century. My name's Mick Garvin. I am the president of the Uptown Business and Revitalization Association. However, we don't have a quorum currently, so I am going to only be speaking for myself as an Oak Ridge business owner. And also, not for the Oak Ridge Arts Council, but I am the artist coordinator of that body and have hired a number of them for different projects. And I have to say that the idea that someone is going to go up that tower as a donation is possibly naive. The murals that are on inbound in my building cost over $1,000 each, and we're not even talking about working at 80 feet plus. And currently, this is completely funded with a surplusage which could be applied to a later art project to, you know, be brought to completion as it was envisioned. So I would like to say that I think it should be taken to its projected conclusion and then with what money they have left and possibly cage some grants. You can try and secure a mountain biker or a bugling elk to put up there, but it ain't going to go free. And it probably isn't going to go really cheap. And for a city that can't get a measure passed to continue its current policing, I think this is a poorly thought-out course of action. Also, I have to say if that measure or that motion was passed in May to talk about artists, we haven't heard anything six months later with the Oak Ridge Arts Council, which has done a bunch of murals around this town. And I just don't think this was awfully well thought out, and I hope that we can just move on from this and down the line with more money in hand, we can make it more colorful. But let's finish the job as we have the funds to expend. I'm over.
Thank you, Mick. I appreciate your thoughts, but also I appreciate you working hard to figure out how to link in here. I know that that is a challenge.
You have no idea.
Okay. All right, so I'm going down the list here. Rick Weimhold, do you have... I see your hand, and I see you on the list. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I... Two things. I absolutely agree that the city of Oak Ridge should get a letter to Robert Killen's group in support of what he's doing. I think what he's doing for small business down there, as well as other businesses, is really incredible. And I'm still hoping immensely that he can get an office and an innovation center up here in Oak Ridge. I'm still twisting thumbs where I can to try to get people to jump in on this. Second of all, I really think that... I agree with most of you guys that we've got to finish the water tower and just get "Oak Ridge welcomes you" up there. It... As Mick said, it's money that's already there. You've got the volunteers lined up who are going to do this project, and I think it's important that we get it done because, you know, I've traveled around the United States a lot, and the one thing that you will always notice is that if there's a water tower in that town, it's always got the city's name on it. There's only a few in Texas that don't, and they're pretty weird. But I absolutely agree that we need to go ahead and get this done. Any artist out there is going to be able to work around the lettering that's up there or replace the lettering to make it fit in with whatever artwork they're doing. But I just do not see an issue with us getting the lettering done now, although it might look a little runny if we try to do it while it's raining. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. Let's move on. Going down the list here, I see it... I'm still going, I'm still going. Catherine Roach? Catherine, did you want to make any comments, or are you just listening? I think she's just listening. But if you change your mind... Oh, I see it comes... Okay. And Linda Cammerer, I see... I'm Melissa? I have you on the screen. Did you want to make a comment, or are you just listening? Okay. I see that on the screen. Are you listening? Okay. I see Michelle on the screen. Did you want to make a comment, or are you listening? Okay. And Michael, I'm assuming that you're there in your capacity as a police?
Correct. No comment.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a Nankey000. Okay. Raj, I see you're listening. Did you want to have... Do you have any comments? Okay. And Rusty, I see you're listening.
Oh, oh, sorry. Hey, Kathy, this is...
Hey, Raj, I see you.
This is Raj.
All right.
Scrambled up on the unmute button.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to briefly share that just from the perspective of one of our nonprofit partners involved with economic development work, it does strike us that having some kind of public-facing welcome would really help to just create an atmosphere of excitement and invitation to people. So just for increasing the visibility and sort of familiarity with the community, we think that this would be a great way to do it. So we hope that city council will move forward with putting "welcome" on into Oak Ridge up on the water tower. Thanks.
Thank you, Raj. Rusty, are you listening? I see... Okay, go ahead.
Nope, just listening.
Just listening. All right, thank you. I see Scott Hollitt. Are you here as the fire department or yourself?
Just listening, Kathy.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. Jason Neimer, I see...
Yes. Michelle's trying to figure out how to unmute.
Okay, has she done that yet? Do you know?
I don't think she is, but she's trying to right now.
Okay. All right. We will go back to that, absolutely. And Jason Neimer? Who did I hear? Is that Michelle? Nope. Jason Neimer, did you want to say anything, or are you just listening? Oh, maybe you went away.
I'm here. I'm just listening.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, please try. Is there anyone else? I keep hearing a voice. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in public comment who hasn't had the opportunity to? If you can unmute yourself and say hello, we will get you. Okay. I think Michelle's having issues because I still haven't seen her unmute herself. Okay. All right. I think we've got everything. We also have to add to the record for a public comment. Four? Do you have four, Brian? Written comments? Three? Three? Five written comments. Are all of these comments about the water tower?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Would you start with the first one and read it into the record, please?
Sure. See, Mayor and Council, I just finished watching, this is from Jackie Taylor, 78195 High Prairie Road. Mayor and Council, I just finished watching the video of the council meeting dated 11/20. I came away with the opinion that the current council cannot agree on what is more important for the city in these troubled times. Here we have a group of volunteers that have been working on this project for some time, raised funds and did start it, and now a council member is complaining and wants a different mural. The city streets are in disrepair, city staff laid off and bare bones law enforcement. City bank balance is still trying to recover from earlier issues and the council wants to hire an artist to paint something else? Question mark. Lift alone was over $1,000 a day. This project was well on its way to be completed and now with the rainy season here and the council is not able to make a decision on it, it has tabled the discussion for a later time. I would request the council listen to Mayor Holston and our recommendations. George Custer and the numerous volunteers should be able to proceed and complete this project as originally planned, respectfully Jackie Taylor.
Thank you. Read the next one.
Yes, ma'am. This is from Louis Gomez, Louis Gomez, 76336 Rainbow Street. Mr. Cushing, let's see, Mayor and Council, I'm asking that the volunteers who gathered together to paint the water tower be allowed to finish the project. Through collaboration and cooperation with the Oak Ridge Westford Chamber of Commerce, donations were collected from a number of community members, including me and participation from the city. This project has been discussed for at least five years. A passionate group of community volunteers got together and made it happen, presenting a traditional style water tower with the community names in keeping with the practice that is observed nationally in small town USA all over our great nation. When you have community members with the passion to take the lead on a project, you do not want to squash that passion and spirit. The passion and spirit from our community members must be celebrated and supported by the community at large and our local governing body. Thank you for allowing me to present my comments, respectfully Louis Gomez.
Thank you.
And to continue on, this is from Doug and Gloria Bates, 76703 Bugle Loop. Dear Kathy and Brian, would you please see the following statements right aloud in the next council meeting in which the water tower painting project is discussed? Thanks, Doug and Gloria Bates. Last summer when our friend and neighbor George Custer announced the volunteer effort to paint our community's unsightly old water tower on Highway 58, we applauded the idea and immediately contributed funds for it. Not only that, we contacted all of our surviving classmates from the Oak Ridge High School class of 1964, several of whom then joined us in contributing funds for this endeavor, even though they no longer live here. Since then, we have been delighted with the progress so far in sprucing up the brooding old eyesore, but we are chagrined to hear that the completion has been held up by city council members who want to finish the project in a way that is different from what we understand was the, stood with the plan. This is outrageous meddling that we believe to be a breach of faith with donors. We sent in our check, as did our friends and classmates, with the confidence that the water tower would be painted exactly as George proposed. And now this. Council members who are trying to hijack this volunteer project are undermining our confidence in the city's administration. They should back off immediately and let this project proceed the way it was pitched in the first place. Sincerely, Doug and Gloria Bates.
Thank you.
Next one is actually from Rick Weimhold, who's already spoken, so I'll pass it.
Thank you.
I believe is the last one, but Tony Schwecker. Although we are not town or even state residents, we have been donating to different Oak Ridge projects and funds over the years because we knew George Custer was involved. Significant donations have been made by our family members to this water tower project that George conceived, did all the prep work for, got the licenses and filled out the paperwork, plus convinced many suppliers to provide discounts. George asserts Custer's love of Oak Ridge and their outreach is, to us, always got a yes, we will, because we knew it would be first class endeavor. However, this recent attempted power grab by certain council members to take over and deny George's request that he simply be able to finish the water tower with the Oak Ridge welcomes you lettering is beyond belief. These are members who not only did, did not volunteer to help with the project, donate a dime or even lend a handful of support, a helpful support to get the word out. They now insist that the lettering not be added till our local artists add their work. Which of these artists actually wants to climb into a bucket approximately 100 feet in the air vibrating and pitching to complete their work? This is simply unrealistic. Let George and his volunteers paint the hand stints of letters designed and donated by a highly skilled computer coder and finish what he and his many volunteers have almost completed under budget. A quality renovation to a water tower that welcomes all to Oak Ridge. Sincerely, Lori and Tony Schwecker. I'm sorry, there's one more miscounting here. This is from Judy Rowland of Oak Ridge. Mayor and Council, I just don't, I don't know just when George came before the council to present what he would like to do for the city of Oak Ridge about the water tower on Highway 58. I do know that he told the council in June that he had wanted to back out and let the city take over because they were wanting to do more than George said he wanted to do. I also know that many citizens came to George and asked him to please take the project back on so it could be finished in a timely matter. A lot of people told George they would donate money and volunteer time as long as he was doing it. Back in 2015, one of the first things I asked when I was first on council was if the city could do something like paint the water tower on Highway 58. I was told it had been looked into and the cost to the city around $75,000 to paint the one out at the OIP. I know the city does not have money like that. My question to council is, why didn't you volunteer to help with the project? The only person from council that showed up was Mayor Holston. Why weren't any of you out looking for people to paint the tower if you knew that you didn't want, you didn't want the volunteers to paint anything on it? I don't understand why then, why when people are doing it for free of charge to the city that you would stop them. I can't, can't see why you wouldn't let George and the volunteers paint Oak Ridge welcomes you on it for now. And when you have the money to pay somebody to paint, they can paint over the city's name and paint whatever you want them to put on it. Please let them finish the job they started. Judy Rowland. And that's the end of the submitted comments.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. And I just want to make sure that there isn't anybody that has unmuted themselves on the participant list. I don't.
Hi, Mayor Kathy.
Hey, Michelle. Okay, you figured it out. Go for it.
I figured it out. All right, Michelle Coker, 485 East Meadowway. As potential council elect, I have a question regarding the water tower. And why do, why is it okay for us to be going through this when it was already voted on?
The reason why we are having this is because we have community members who are expressing their opinion in public comment. And that is the right, as we have seen many times in Oak Ridge, for community to come to council and ask them to do something by verbally requesting. So during public comment, we get to say that. And then what will happen next, just instructionally, is we as a council will determine whether or not we want to take up the, the issue.
Okay. My opinion is it should stay like it is. I mean, why, why keep going backwards? Why keep having to redo things when it was already voted on? My opinion, that's how it should stay. And as for the citizens, I would hope they think the same way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay. And I don't think I see, oh, I, no, Michelle's little blue hand is still up. Hold on, bear with me. I don't see any more little blue hands and nobody seems to be coming off. Okay, so that completes our public comment. We are going to move to mayor comments, announcements and proclamations. So we're going to come back to the subject, but let me get through this list of other things, too. And some of it I will need input. Kristi, do you, are you going to mention anything about the holiday parade?
I can do that during counselor comments or I can do it now.
Okay. Well, if you would do that during counselor comments, that would be awesome and then we'll have that conversation then. Just letting you know, for the holiday season, we are not putting lights on City Hall. We do not have the extra money to do that because it costs money to our manpower. So we decided that, or it was decided that, that that would be something we did not do this year. We are going to be, I wanted to bring up, you all got a, an email just today at 3:00, so you may not have seen it. I encourage you, council, to go look for it. The city administrator forwarded it from Patience Winningham. And Patience is our emergency coordinator for, emergency program manager for Lane County. And what it is, is explaining to you that there is a wildfire evacuation planning project that is beginning. Lane County has contracted with, with the University of Oregon to begin this, it's, they're contracting to develop an emergency evacuation plan for the county. And the project will assess, evaluate, test and deploy area specific emergency evacuation plans, including shelter in place options for high wildfire hazard areas in Lane County. The secondary benefits of this project are going to include informing local stakeholders, that would be us, in the affected evacuation areas about mitigation efforts such as fuel actions, critical infrastructure impact and emergency and evacuation preparedness steps. I sent an email back to Patience thanking her for getting this going and telling her that the city of Oak Ridge seems ready to help in any way. And obviously Brian has already been involved in this and he will pursue this also. But if you haven't read the email, check your emails, council. It's really good news. I think it's a, an important next step to what's going on here. We'll talk about holiday stuff during council comments when we talk about the parade and we can talk about the tree lighting at that time, too. I do want to address the water tower issue right now and I would like to ask council to, to put it on the agenda so that we can have a discussion about it. And I would ask for a consensus to do that.
This is Bobby. I'm fine with adding it to the agenda.
All right, that's a yes. John, thumbs up. Dawn, up or down? I can't see Paul. Paul's up.
I personally would rather wait.
All right. Counselor Kenyon says no. I lost Counselor Holland. Are you still there?
I'm here.
Oh, good. I guess it's just not on my screen. Okay.
Isn't this something that we should talk about now? Because I thought one of our rules was that we don't take things and put them on the agenda and make a motion on them during the same meeting.
I didn't say that we were going to make a motion, but I'd like to bring it up to the council and do it. We can talk about it now if that's a preference.
Okay. I'm fine with talking about it whenever.
Okay. As long as we talk about it. I just think it's important that we do, considering the numbers of input from the community that we had. I don't want to just blow it off and go on someplace else. So we'll do that in just, just a few minutes once we get to business from the city council at number nine. Let me look my list. I don't have any other things that I was going to make sure that I mentioned. Wildfire evacuation, oh, COVID updates. So as you all know, our COVID cases are rising. We expect them to continue to rise. Think of it this way, if our, if our rate of transmission is one, is about 1.4, 1.5, that means every case that you hear of has infected a half of another person. So every two cases infects another one case. So we are going to rise. That's not a reason to get panicky, but it's a reason to double up your efforts to keep your masks on, wash your hands, practice your social distancing and consider seriously whether or not you should be traveling around outside of our area to celebrate Thanksgiving and be grateful and thankful for where we are right now, healthy and alive. So I, I don't want this community to be alarmed. I want them to know that we are doing everything we can. My next newsletter next week will talk about, the, the list is, is massive of what the fire department and EMS does. Just looking at it is exhausting to keep themselves safe as well as their patients safe so that they can continue to protect the community. So I might, I will probably mention some of those things. And I just want to encourage the community, when you have questions, to reach out and ask, don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call your counselors. Don't be afraid to, to share information with one another, but let's just make sure that we're not sharing information in order to, to argue with one another about what you should or should not do. Let's just be encouraging and complimentary and just pleased that we're all walking around and healthy and comforting to those who maybe aren't. So let's move on then. Council comments and announcements. So council, if you have any comments, please, and I don't know why this has changed. Hold on. Ah, there it is, Gal Review. I would love to use the little blue hands, but I can't.
I don't know if you can see me, Kathy.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the Volunteer Association met last, last evening and they talked about the parade and the parade will go on with some changes, of course. We're not going to have as many walkers as there normally are outside the apparatus. Of course, every single person will be masked and wearing gloves. We still would like to take donations for Toys for Tots and Food for Oak Ridge and we'll take precautions of wearing gloves for all those items. The date is Saturday, December 5th and we do have a Mrs. Claus and a Santa. Parade route is the same as before. I see Audi sitting in the off, the audience there waving his hand. He's our Santa and he's got the beard for it.
Nice.
And yeah, so rigs will be decorated, going through the streets, playing music, no sirens, just kind of waving and trying to give a little bit of holiday cheer to our community. And I did want to mention one thing in your post, Kathy, it did say that the parade ends at Banner Bank, but it actually does continue down First Street and we go downhill street all the way to Highway 58. But that was just minor. If you would like us to have Santa light the tree, we're able to do that. And that could just be a minor pit stop, pit stop, but obviously we're not going to be, you know, doing the typical gathering.
Right. That's wonderful. Thank you, Chrissy. And so what will happen then with the tree is our public works will be putting it up and we'll, and we'll have the lights on it. And then we will light it December 5th, when Santa comes by and waves his magic wand or whatever it is that he does. So what we're going, what we're doing is encouraging the community, while we can't have that great cookies and cocoa and, and hot cider gathering and singing of carols, I'm just encouraging the community to take time throughout December to come to the, come over to the tree and see it and create your own little family tradition or your own little friend tradition. Bring a homemade ornament, hang it on the tree if you'd like, you know, sing your own little carol, bring your cookies and your cocoa. But it will be lit all of December, so let's enjoy it. Chrissy, thank you to the volunteers. So can I ask a question about Toys for Tots and also for Food for Lane County? So Toys for Tots, you said you were accepting donations and that is, that is cash or money, right?
I'm not coordinating Toys for Tots, but I can tell you in prior years, we collect the toys and we simply give them to the, the, the area that they house the toys, which is usually the fire department. And then money, money is also given to Toys for Tots and I believe that's the next weekend. Now, food, we actually do food for Oak Ridge, so we deliver it here to the local food bank, not Food for Lane County.
Excellent. Excellent. That's great. And I, we will get the deep, more details out to the community about the, the Toys for Tots and how to do that. And if we can get that information about, you know, do they need to be wrapped? Do they need to be unwrapped? You know, what do we do so that folks will know and we can collect those as the, as the parade goes by? So thank you for doing that. Thank you to the volunteers for taking that on. We appreciate it. And while it will be a different holiday, it will still be a wonderful holiday. That's awesome. Okay. Business from the city council, let's continue. Any other counselors, do you have any business you would like to bring up? Okay. I'm hesitating, I'm pausing. Okay. So let's, yes, Dawn, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to comment on was responding to the public comments. So if we are for sure adding that to the agenda, I will wait.
Okay, yes, we are for sure. Do that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let's move into the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I think I heard a Paul, but I heard another voice, so it's a Paul. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Councilwoman McCallum.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hollis?
Aye.
Counselor Forecom?
Aye.
What's in there?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Let's move into the business from the City Council, nine. And since we're going to add one item into that area, that will be 9.1, and that will be the water tower discussion. Considering the numbers, the people that have felt that it was important enough to write letters and to attend the meeting and share their thoughts, there seems... The ones that have spoken, some of... The majority of the ones that have spoken have talked and encouraged the Council to reconsider their conversation from last week and to allow lettering to go back up on it. And that's all I will say to open it up, and I will ask councilors to respond as they choose.
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Hollis.
I definitely want to acknowledge, I really appreciate all the people coming and making comments on that and being respectful and sharing the differing views. I do want to take a minute, and I heard a lot of misinformation on comments of things that were not true. There was a lot of things that are true, but first, it seems to be that there was a lot of discussions with George behind the scenes, and I think that's where this whole breakdown has occurred. And decisions were made outside a council meeting. And for me, I am super frustrated about that, because we made a very definitive decision on what we were doing. We were opening this up May 7th. We made a motion. We were opening up for outside artists. George agreed that he would paint the tower a solid blank color. We went with that. We said that after it was done, after it was done, we would solicit local artists, we would set up a contest and allow the community to submit designs. And George agreed that he would hold off on the wording, that that wouldn't be put up there. And also, Brian had said that George was backing out of it and that he might volunteer if the city decided to pursue it. And that's where it was left off for months. Now, the comments, the couple comments that I heard from community members shaming councilors for not showing up to help paint the water tower, councilors were not notified when this was happening. I was never told when the water tower painting was happening. We were not given any updates. That didn't happen. If I had known there was an invitation to councilors or looking for more volunteers to come paint, I absolutely would have been there. I volunteer my time in all areas of the community. I've seen Dawn Kenyon out there volunteering to do trash cleanups. I've seen John McClelland out there volunteering. I've seen every one of our councilor out there volunteering. Had there been a date and time and a notice invitation, I would have been there. So that is also frustrating. We were never told when that was happening. After the fact, when it did happen, is when the topic was brought back up again about the lettering on the tower. And when that came back to us, we... The most, the majority of the Council went back to, we still had the same thought process in our head, which was the motion that stood that was on the table for May 7th, that we were going to... Now was the time we're opening it up for local artists. For myself personally, I reached out to a couple local artists about volunteering. I never spoke to an artist that was going to charge us for their work. I spoke to them about submitting designs to the Council to review. It didn't get advertised yet because it hadn't... The tower itself hadn't been painted. So, you know, the comments out there that no one's going to do this, that it's not going to happen, that there's no philanthropy out there to donate these types of funds, you know, is not known. I actually today had an offer from someone that's pretty known in the community right now, doing a lot of things like that, and he offered money to put up, to do this. So there's still room there for us to explore that. But our last meeting, it was not agreed that we were not going to put the words up, "Oak Ridge welcomes you." That wasn't decided. It was decided that we were going to wait a couple meetings, which is the first of the year, I believe, and that we were going to table it till then and re-discuss this about whether we're going to go with the wording, or if we're going to do the wording and, or if we're going to do a mural. And also, it was discussed that I would have an opportunity to see what people out there were willing to do, and also the costs associated from other areas. And that opportunity hasn't been able to be dove into. You know, it's frustrating to me because I think the biggest problem here is there was a lot of stuff that happened behind the scenes without Council input or Council knowledge, and that bothers me the most.
Thank you, Counselor Hollis. Do I have any other councilors that would like to make comment? Counselor McClellan?
Excuse me. Well, I agree we did decide back in May to put this out to the community as a activity to gain more community involvement. As I said in the last meeting, I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. Even in the last meeting, Counselor Hollis said certainly we want the word "Oak Ridge" on there, and I agree with that. My fear is that we're going to kick the can so far down the road, it's going to get lost, that we're going to wait, and the artists aren't going to step up, and the funds aren't going to be there, and the tower is going to remain blank for years. I agree with Ms. Kutchins when she said that it could always be painted back over if an artist chose a design that they could not encompass what was painted on there. Or I totally believe that an artist could take whatever wording and incorporate that into a design. But again, my fear is, is that while we're waiting for the artist's art that may never appear and may never materialize, we're going to end up left with just a big tower with nothing on it. And as I said in the last meeting, I used to never notice the tower when it was rusted and whatnot, because it'd blend in with the trees in the background. But now that it's painted, as soon as I come on down by Stewart's, I see the tower, and I have to agree with the citizens that comment that if it said something welcoming, I think that there's... That's a good thing, not a bad thing. And again, an artist can either incorporate it or paint over it. It doesn't preclude us from moving forward with putting it out there to the community as a design. I just don't see any reason not to proceed. There's more pros to proceeding with painting the name on there than there are cons to it, so, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor McClellan. Any other councilors? Okay.
No. Abby?
Yes, Counselor Forecom?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, too. To me, putting something on there is better than nothing. And then like John was saying, it's going to end up getting kicked... You know, it's going to be at least two or three months, and if they're willing to get it done sooner, they can, you know, paint over it, incorporate it, or do whatever they want to do. They have the volunteers and the funds and the money to do it now. I know back in May, what we said, but we have these people in the city volunteering, wanting to do this.
We also have other people that are volunteering to do artwork.
Let's let each counselor say their...
Yes. Yes, volunteering to do the artwork, too. But these guys already painted it. And to me, like, you know, why can't they... If they don't want it on, they could paint over it. That's basically what I'm looking at, to put it on there, you know. They should have basically just put it on there right after they were done with it and dealt with it. If somebody doesn't want it, they climb up there and take it off, which I doubt it would happen, you know, because it's going to be months. I won't see it, not on my terms, because I only have two months left, for somebody to actually get a artist to go do that. And cost nothing to the city, it's going to be hard. But yeah, just putting... Incorporating that or painting over it, I don't see nothing wrong with it.
Thank you, Counselor Forecom. Counselor Whitney, or Counselor Kenyon, either one. Kenyon, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I was hoping to butt in here as soon as I could, because it's hard to get to the unmute button sometimes.
Go ahead.
I wanted to say that I do appreciate everybody's comments about the tower, whether they're in favor or against following Council motions is... I appreciate it. I do believe that the individuals that wrote the emails that I had an opportunity to read earlier today, and some of the people who are here speaking tonight, have been misinformed of what actually happened.
Yes.
First, there was a motion that was made and passed on May 7th. And motions are binding. I'm not sure how many people are aware of that, but they actually are binding. We are obligated to follow what is made in a motion. We made our decision based on being told that George Custer was no longer wishing to be involved in the project. So our decision was made based on that information. We were also told that Public Works would be painting the tower the blank slate. After that meeting, our city administrator spoke to George, and they devised what must be the plan that these individuals all believe the Council agreed to. But that is not what we agreed to. We knew nothing about the plan that George Custer and Brian Kutchin made together, which led to asking people for donations and telling people that a certain something was going to be painted on the tower. Our Council knew nothing about that. Our city administrator has no authority to override a motion of the Council, and no authority to authorize solicitation of donors that the Council didn't agree to. It's an infraction of the Charter, Chapter 5, Section 21, Paragraph 6B, where it says that the CA keep the Council advised of the affairs and of the needs of the affairs and the needs of the city. So it's actually an infraction to go against the Council's motion. It's also in the Council, or excuse me, this year's personal contract, that we can reprimand the CA for violating any of the city's policies or directives, according to his contract under Section 5, Paragraph C. The process is established for a reason. If we may just disregard any one motion at any time, what is to say disregard any other motion? Then we have no order. No one had a right to solicit for donations with any promises, and it is not this Council's fault that they did. We have not been supplied with any kind of a budget or donation configuration or even... We don't know anything about any of this, other than that we need a motion to solicit for artists to present drawings, and that's where we're at. And we also agreed at our last meeting, as everyone knows, that we will discuss this again in the future. We just don't have that on our agenda yet. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Whitney?
I'm trying to figure out how to word this. So the way this has all happened, my biggest concern is the divide that it's creating within our community. A lot of people are talking about who has said what where and what's happened here and there, and really, the whole intent was to create something that was nice for our community and to get a painted a blank slate from, based on our May motion. Me personally, I would really like that whatever we do and however we talk, to make sure that we're valuing the volunteers that volunteered their time to do this. And I hear what everybody is saying. I understand what's being said. I understand the concerns. I hear the concerns. But really, the bottom line is, was to get this painted a blank slate, to make something nice for our community. And really, regardless as to how things happened, it can be something positive for our community. And I feel like it's growing into something that's not positive and that's creating a divide, and that's what's most concerning to me. Back in May, when I made the motion, it was based on a lot of what Dawn said. However, even though motions are binding, I believe we can always change our mind based on circumstances. Since that time, we've had a lot that has changed. I mean, George had a medical event that we're all aware of that impacted some of this. We have COVID, you know, with the pandemic. We have so many different moving parts. This happened since then, and to add something that's creating a divide, it just... It feels awful, and it's not, I think, what any of us want, but I feel like that's the direction it's going. And I'd really like to change that direction, and I think it would be great if we can all make a big effort amongst ourselves to do that, as councilors, as mayor, as staff, as citizens. I just would love to see that happen, because I believe we all want what's best for Oak Ridge, and we all want a positive environment and a good city. So with that said, I am fine with putting the letters up there on the water tower. I don't believe that it's an either-or situation. I think both can happen. I think by putting the letters up there, you're valuing all the people that have volunteered their time or donated money to make this happen, because they've done it with the right intent and a positive intent, just like the people that have been talked to about painting it. It's all with positive intent. So I don't see a reason not to do both, as we work on looking at a possible mural or maybe even a wrap on it, you know, something that could be painted and then wrapped around it. I mean, there's a lot of options out there, but this is something that can be done now, and I think it should move forward. And motions can be changed, and decisions can be changed, and we've seen that happen. You know, we've seen it happen with our Fire Department. A lot of decisions were reversed and changed after we had administrative changes. So that can happen, and it doesn't mean it's wrong, and it doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. It's just, you know, you can listen to everybody's input and really look at where you are now and make a decision based on what's best for us right now. And I honestly believe that both can happen, and I would really like to see us kind of change our attitudes with this and the way we're looking at it, myself included, and be more positive about it and really look at what the intent was, because I think everybody wanted something positive out of this, all of us. So that is my comment.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. I appreciate that. And I think, you know, following up with what Counselor Whitney has just said, I think those are very wise words. I think that what we want to do is have a positive outcome from this. We want to honor our community who has come out and not only donated and helped, but has expressed their opinion. We want to honor the Council process, and we understand, last week or last council meeting, we acknowledged that there were missteps made, and motions, while they are binding, you know, can be changed. They can... motions while they are binding, you know, can be changed. Um, they can, um, we can, um, we can soften something, we can add to it, um, to reflect the will of our community and the will of the council to work together, um, with both the community, um, and with each other. I understand fully, um, how fun and wonderful it would be to have a nice mural up on the on the water tower. And I think that's what our intent is. But I don't think, excuse me, just a moment. Anybody has a doggy door that they would like to donate, let me know. Um, anyway, I think one of the important, the important thing here is, uh, in my opinion, is that we do move forward positively. And, um, I believe that it is would be a, it would be in the best interests of our community to move forward, um, with putting the word Oak Ridge on with the understanding that we are going to solicit for murals and designs, both whether it's donated or we have to pay for it. Those are all the questions that we raised last time we discussed this about how much will it cost? Is it even possible? Um, we know it's possible. I mean, we know that that is possible. No one's saying that it can't be done. But we do need to know how much it is. But in the meantime, we have, we have volunteers, we have, uh, materials, we have the money that has been donated by our community to get the words up there. And we can all win in this. We can all walk away in a winning situation. We can get the word Oak Ridge up there and so that tower isn't just the big white tower that's clean, but welcomes people to the community and says, here we are. And work toward putting a mural up and raising money or finding the funds to do that because you're right, there is money out there. There are many citizens who think having a mural up there would be a great thing. There are grants from arts councils that we can get for that, but those things take time. So why not, why not move to the win-win situation and have everybody win rather than have a contentious, um, result that ends with someone feeling like they've lost when we don't have to do that. So I would, I would, I would make a motion that we put on the tower, the Oak Ridge, the name Oak Ridge, um, using the materials that have already been secured, um, and that, um, that is only in preparation, that is only a, um, holding place, uh, for a mural, which is our end result, um, for our water tower.
So I'll second your motion, Kathy, um, although I'd like to add that it should be at zero cost to the city.
I would accept that friendly amendment at zero cost. Thank you. Let's have discussion on that. With no discussion, Jackie, will you please call for the roll?
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Howard?
Nay.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Counselor LaFleur?
Aye.
That passes. Um, thank you, counsel, for, um, engaging in this difficult conversation in a way that I think we can all be proud of. Um, let's move on to business from the city administrator, 10.1, city administrator prochem.
All right, uh, let me get up here. So I'm going to actually have to withdraw this given the two-week freeze by the governor.
Okay.
I was intending to go out of state and given the requirements there, but, uh, quarantined on both ends, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So, um, I might take some leave, but it will be local.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. Um, so let's move to the city administrator update.
Okay, uh, tomorrow we're having, um, pallet, uh, units delivered to the WAC. Uh, these are in, uh, to mitigate the COVID impacts on the warming center. So, uh, they'll be constructed and, uh, as soon as we can get them hooked up with electricity, uh, they would be available for use by the warming center to house those folks that come in so they don't have to stay inside the WAC and extensive cleaning required to to, uh, clean up the inside of the WAC. Instead, they'll be housing these units that have a heater and a light. And, uh, from there, they'll, uh, they'll, it'll be a simpler process to clean them, uh, and, uh, a better habitat for for the individuals that are that are housing, are using them. So that happens tomorrow morning early, uh, and, uh, again, we have to get the electricity hooked up. So we'll see when that happens. Um, so the city is now currently in receipt of two, uh, small city allotments. Uh, we have a hundred thousand dollar grant for, uh, Garden Road and a hundred thousand dollar grant for Berry Street. Uh, in the past, these haven't been used, but I've asked the city engineer to de-scope the projects below a hundred thousand so there's no cost to the city and to move forward. The idea would be we put an RFP out, uh, and then, uh, start repaving of those streets in the spring. As soon as the city engineer finishes with the paperwork to de-scope, the council will see what the, uh, what the projects will look like and, uh, be able to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down if they want, uh, repaving, uh, streets. Uh, city?
Okay.
Another issue, uh, we currently have one city employee in isolation and one city employee in quarantine due to COVID. Um, and to follow up, the, uh, Public Works will be getting the tree, uh, for the lighting and, uh, should be in place, uh, on that weekend, uh, for that to happen unless, uh, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Um, we'd like to, uh, I'd like to propose that we, uh, it's now time for business license renewal. Uh, because of the COVID situation, I'd like to, uh, delay the pa- payment due date until June instead of making it do right here in the middle of COVID. So for the small businesses that are already struggling. So my intent is to make the due date out in June for their business license. Um, so the community center at Green Waters and the caretaker house at Green Waters both encountered leaks on the roof leaks on the last weekend. So, um, currently they have tarts over them, but both will be require repair and more to follow as soon as we can evaluate the damage that the water caused and what it would cost to re-roof or whatever repairs required. So that's the update, uh, ready for questions if you have any.
Yeah, I have a couple. I was wondering on the roads when we, you know, we've got this hundred thousand dollars, um, for each of those projects. And when we have to go to the city city engineer, does that come out of that hundred thousand dollar grant that we got, which is free money, kind of sort of?
Yeah, but he's already done, he's already done the full scope on Garden Road and Berry Street. It's just a matter of de-scoping the efforts. So I don't anticipate a huge cost there. Uh,
Oh, okay.
The sort of off-the-wall estimates or or back-in-the-napkin estimates right now leave plenty of, uh, headroom in that hundred thousand to pay, maybe get in some sidewalks, uh, and, uh, also pay the the overhead expenses.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Also, I wanted to ask about the, um, uh, the, uh, where are my, uh, the business license renewal. I just wanted to add to so the council knew. So the business license renewal is a letter that goes out to businesses saying, you know, it's time, uh, January is your renewal, um, uh, please send in your information. Um, the city of Oak Ridge requires that all businesses, um, apply for a license. It does not require that all businesses pay for the license. If you make under five thousand dollars a year, you don't have to pay for your license, but you're still required to apply for a license so that we can keep track of who is here. Um, so we're tightening up that and getting folks to to get licenses who haven't had any and also give them the opportunity because the chamber has partnered with the city and is going to be including a, um, a letter with that, just saying, hey, you know, as a chamber, we're here, we would love to have your contact information. We would love to partner with you to help you in your with your business. Um, they've been doing a, chamber's been doing a pretty bang-up job, um, helping businesses be aware of the opportunities they have. And and trust me, they are as confusing as can be. Um, so but that's going to go out with that business license too, um, request. And because of our hiatus, like Brian said, um, the business license, uh, fee won't be due until June. Um, that'll give, uh, businesses the opportunity to, um, to get there. They're not onerous, um, but, um, that still is a, I think it's a, it's a wise thing to do for us so that you know that that's happening too. Uh, that's all the questions I had. And counsel, do you have any questions of Brian? Chrissy?
Um, who is, what, who's doing the work on the work that Brian talked about a couple minutes ago?
On the the pallets or the road or the business?
I'm curious about the engineer work.
Oh, our engineer.
Our, our, our prior engineer, the one we had for several years?
Yes, it's our current engineer record.
Turen McLeod is the city.
Ed Hodges.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel?
Um, just to piggyback on what Chrissy just said, were we putting out an RFP regarding the engineer at some point?
That was what my concern was as well.
We have discussed it. We have not made any direction about that.
So was his contract extended? How does that work?
The contract.
With Ed Hodges?
Contract was let long before I got here and he's still the city engineer.
Right.
Uh, so i- if counsel wants to put out another RFP on, like, we can go go at that.
Does his contract auto renew?
Uh, the contract is so old, I I have, I don't know if I even, if I even have it, but, uh, I'd have to look.
Uh, yeah, I have it. And I think it does, Chrissy. I'm not.
Well, I remember before when I was a citizen sitting in the audience, I remember seeing counsel, actually. I remember Mr. Gomes bringing the contract to counsel.
We put a contract, absolutely.
Yeah. And and you guys re-signed it. So that was my question.
Yeah, we actually put an RFP out for a new, a new engineer and got two, um, two, businesses that applied and we ended up rehiring the one that we already had. Um, so yeah, uh, why don't we take a look at the when that, what the contract is, when it expires, and then, um, bring that back to council and we can make some decisions as to what we want to do with that. And, uh, do we want to continue? Do we want to look for something else? Um, any other questions? I do did want to mention about these, um, pallet things. The question that I didn't hear any of you ask was how much is this going to cost us? And it's not going to cost us a thing. So these pallet, little pallet shelters that are going up were purchased by Lane County, correct? And, um, they're being provided to communities to use for, um, warming center opportunities. Um, so Eugene is putting up a hundred and twenty-one. Um, we are getting three. Cottage Grove is getting seventeen, did you say?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Um, so it's an opportunity for us to be able to to provide this and and we're, they're no cost to us. And then they go back to, um, Lane County in March when the warming center, um, cycle is over. Um, so we're kind of excited to see it. So they'll be setting up between seven and 11 tomorrow down at the WAC. Come on down if you want to take a look and see what they're going to be like. Um, I'll, I'll be down there about nine or 10 or so to s- to see what they're doing and and assess them and, uh, figure out, um, I won't say decorate, but how to put the important supplies inside, like a blanket and a pillow. So, uh, any other questions? Okay, let's go on, Brian.
Okay, I'll kick it to Eric Taitola for finance update, if he's there.
Hello.
Eric?
Um, so the audit's going on and I just got the recap from the auditor earlier today that things were going really smooth and she's only got a few questions left. So that was a nice surprise. And also saw the first pieces of tax revenue getting, uh, deposited into Banner Bank this week as well.
Okay.
That's good to hear.
Any questions of Eric? If not, I'll move to, uh, either Michael or the police chief.
Thanks.
Am I up?
You're up.
Uh, not much to add because we gave a report at the first meeting of the month. Uh, one thing I'd like, uh, both councils and citizens to be aware, we're going to try to do some kind of shop for the cop. It's going to look a little different than we've done in the past. We may just have, uh, each officer adopt a family type of thing. Uh, so we'll be trying to figure that out with the school, how we're going to do that. And the school usually is the one that picks the the kids. And so we might revert and have it be like families this year. It's just going to look a little differently. Normally do it because we're going to take kids shopping in to to town. So we'll be still sending some letters out for donations for that like we normally do. So it's just going to look a little different than we normally do. So, uh, I don't for sure how that's going to look, but we'll get back to you when we know a little bit, probably the first meeting in December.
Good, good.
That's pretty much all I have for now.
Okeydokey.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the fire department. Um, Eric is on a call.
Dawn, did you have a question? Uh, hold on, Brian. Dawn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Chief Martin a question.
Sure.
Um, how does one get on the list to be sent a letter and invited to participate in donating for Shop for a Cop? I I've never received one before. How do those go out?
No, normally, uh, and Michael can chime in here, uh, Sergeant McPherson, normally we send those out to the businesses and then, uh, citizens have just usually come into the police department or city hall and give donations. But we usually put it on our Facebook page for just the general citizen ones.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, uh, fire department update. Um, we've got some, uh, new guidance on OSHA COVID requirements that are pretty rigid. Um, and so Scott's done a great job of pulling together, uh, kind of a, the operating directives that for, you know, that mandate what you have to do inside the station when you're with a patient, what happens if you get notified, um, and what are the quarantine procedures. Police are doing a similar thing, uh, with respect to their operation. And, uh, I will take it, it'll be a slightly less complex, uh, type documentation for Public Works and Admin, uh, which I'll, I'll put out. But those are due in December. Um, for a fire department, uh, they've been busy. Um, but as, as you know, with the levy reality, uh, I started to do the staff work to look at alternative, alternatives to ambulance transportation. Uh, and so I can fold this into the budget cycle for the budget committee and the city council to look at, uh, maybe get two or three different alternatives, what I'm hoping, and what the financial impact of each of those alternatives is and what's the financial impact of status quo. So I'm working that. Uh, other than that, um, we did some work with Hazel Dell, uh, and went up there. Uh, Scott took a group up there just to exercise some of the equipment and we're working well with, uh, the Hazel Dell board. Um, other than that, uh, are there questions about the fire or I'll move on? Okay, hearing nothing. Uh, community services.
Sorry.
Counselor Kenyon?
Dawn, did you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to know if we couldn't add that to an agenda for a topic to discuss at a future meeting.
Specifically, what did you want to add?
Uh, sorry, what, uh, what Brian was just talking about with the fire department?
The ambulance transportation service?
Yeah.
To to what end? I don't know what we've accomplished.
What it, yeah. Do you want to talk about the the service itself? Do you want to talk about what what we provide, how much it costs? What are, where are we going with this? Its future? I think that's what you're going to.
Um, stop that. I'm sorry, what?
Did you want, did you want to talk about its future, its, um, Did you want, did you want to talk about its future, its, um, what we do currently with it? What is the, what would be the topic? I'm sorry.
Um, you know what? Let me think on that and I'll just send out a request via email for the whole entire topic I'd like to address.
Okay, that sounds good.
To, to reiterate, this is staff work to look at options. This is nothing more than that. To make it clear.
Right.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Uh, committee services, public work, uh, as I mentioned, uh, the, the two, we're, uh, we're pretty stressed with that. Um, we're looking at, uh, kind of a, a couple folks that, uh, I've actually asked to stay home at times, uh, because they start to feel ill. Uh, and if it's anything that looks like it could be COVID, I tell them to stay home and go get tested. So we've had a couple absences that it wasn't COVID, but, uh, they been, they had to be out for a week or, a week or three, three days. So, uh, it's been a little tight with regards to, uh, getting the work done there, but they're, they're pulling through. Uh, other than that, um, the, uh, the, the, uh, work that they're doing is, uh, about normal. I think I have the, oh, I had, uh, update, but it's not here. Let's see. I had their update, uh, here somewhere. Let's see. No. Okay. So, uh, and I'll kick it to Grace for the economic development update, if she has anything. She doesn't have to speak, but I may have surprised her with this.
Sure, yeah, I'll say a couple things. Um, I am the rare participant, rare America participant, working with the city as well as the Oak Ridge Air, uh, program. And I've just been getting up to speed the last couple of months and have been meeting and working with the Chamber and Oregon Rain and other partners. And I'm really excited to continue my work and get to know the community better. Um, so I'll be working on a lot of different items, including some kind of tourism and marketing items, creating a welcome brochure, and looking at marketing the OIP and, uh, looking into workforce housing opportunities and kind of economic development across the board. So I'm looking forward to having more updates from the new year once I get into some of those bigger projects. Thank you.
Any questions for Grace?
If you haven't, um, Counselors, if you haven't had the opportunity to meet Grace or, um, to interact with her on, in, in anything, um, I would, I would encourage you to call in and, um, and chat with her on the phone and, um, get an understanding of what she's doing here as a, as a rare student. And, um, she has been, um, she is, she is a very, um, intelligent, um, resourceful young woman and has been, um, a real addition to, uh, to the staff. So get to know her. Now, it's well worth your time. Um, okay.
Kathy, I have a question.
Yes, Bobby.
As I, I'm listening to Brian's, um, updates. So when he was talking about COVID and that you have one staff personnel, one person that's isolating, um, it made me wonder about our water treatment plant, um, because I know that not very many people are licensed to do that. So, um, I just want to make sure we're covered there, you know? Because if Jack gets sick, what do we do?
Well, actually, uh, we did a pretty good exercise, a, a remote kind of an emergency exercise, uh, if you remember back in May, I think it was, where we were able to actually use the SCADA system and connect remotely. So, um, we, we have that in our hip pocket, but, uh, right now we're doing okay.
Okay, I was just wondering.
It's a good question, Bobby. I mean, you know, when, when you run on a shoestring and everybody does double and triple duty, um, one person gets sick and, and it, it can, it can take out a lot of, uh, a lot of the chores and, and jobs that we have to do with the community.
Yeah, especially with COVID, it's, it's scary stuff.
And I do want to continue to be able to flush the foot.
Yeah, yeah.
So just, that's a good thing. Um, okay, so we're going to move on to 13, which is, um, 11.1, 11.1, well, that's odd. 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3. So, um, the first two ordinances are ordinances that are going to correct, correct a Scrivener's error. And Brian, I will let you wrap your, your mouth around Scrivener's error because I don't think I can say it right.
So Mayor, uh, those are kind of low priority. I, I would, since we have Dave Hilton dialed in, uh, would you mind if we changed the order and looked at, uh, well, label 11.3, sorry about that, but ordinance 936?
No problem.
Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan, okay.
Absolutely. I have no problems doing that at all. Let's, let's, um, move first to 936, ordinance 936, the TSP plan.
Okay, this is agenda item, uh, 13-3, not 11-3. Uh, the exhibits are, were the TSP volumes one and two, which you all received links to. Um, the title is Transportation System Plan Adoption. What we're looking for is a motion from the floor to adopt ordinance 936. So we had two public hearings, one with the planning commission, one with city council. Um, and we made changes based on those public hearings and council decisions. Um, so, uh, the, the idea here is to adopt this ordinance and you have three options. You can fully and distinctly read the ordinance on two different days before enactment, or you can read the ordinance by title only if no council requests it to be read in full, or you can enact the ordinance in a single meeting by unanimous vote, providing the ordinance is first read in full and then by title. Uh, we're recommending option three to kind of expedite this and, and get this off Dave's plate. But, um, before we move on, I'd, I'd ask Dave, uh, do you have anything to say or you want to wait for questions from Council?
I'll wait for questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. All right, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I move for the first reading of ordinance number 936.
You, are you, I just want to make sure that you are doing number one and not the recommended number three.
I am doing number one.
So that you will do it in two different?
I move for the first reading of ordinance number 936.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
And I will open it for discussion. And my, my question would be, why do you want to do it this way rather than being able to, um, move through and get this done? Um, is there a, a reason?
Yeah, my reason is that I move that we read it once now and once later.
So you want the entire, it read in its entirety? Yes.
My motion is that I move.
I heard your motion in this discussion.
For 936.
My question in the discussion is why do you prefer that?
Because she doesn't have to. She doesn't have to give an answer.
Counsel Harlett? She does not have to answer, but she can say she has a right to answer.
No, you're berating her.
No, I am not.
Motion.
Counsel Harlett?
Why are you yelling at me? No, you, no, my mommy.
You're interrupting.
I'm the counselor. I am defending her because it is her right to make that motion.
I, I, and I accepted the motion and it was seconded. In discussion, I asked if she had a reason why she chose that above the other and she hasn't told me. And she's welcome to say, I don't want to.
All right, I feel like you're being rude. I think you need to let it go.
Counsel Kenyon, what did you just say?
I said, uh, Kathy, or Mayor Holston, I'm not interested in sharing my reasoning for my decision to make this motion.
Thank you. I just, I appreciate you answering me. Is there any other discussion? No other discussion. Okay, let's call for a vote.
Counsel Whitney?
Nay.
Counsel Kenyon?
Aye.
Counsel McCollum?
Nay.
Mayor Holston?
Nay.
Counsel Harlett?
Aye.
Counsel Corcom?
Nay.
That motion, that motion does not pass. Do I hear another motion?
Yes, I move we adopt ordinance 936 in a single reading, then read by title, and then in full.
Do I hear a second?
So we can get it done tonight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Whoa, 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 whoa. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? All right, so, um, Brian, can you read, read by title?
If no one is opposed to reading by title.
I am opposed.
Okay, and I'll read this in full. City of Oak Ridge, ordinance number 936, an ordinance to repeal ordinance 840 and adopting the Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan, amending the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan Ordinance 550. Whereas the State of Oregon's Transportation Planning Rule requires cities and counties to write and implement transportation system plans and administrative rules have been adopted to set out the requirements of the Transportation Planning Rule. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge has properly notified the Department of Land Conservation and Development of the final hearing, considering the adoption of the draft Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan, TSP, and recommending amendments to the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan in compliance with ORS 197610. And whereas, on June 16th, 2020, the Oak Ridge Planning Commission conducted a properly advertised public hearing on the draft TSP and recommended amendments to the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, on July 16th, the Oak Ridge City Council conducted a properly advertised public hearing on the draft TSP and recommended amendments to the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, based on staff reports, the recommendations of the TSP Citizen Advisory Committee and the testimony at said public hearing, the city council has ensured the development of this TSP was guided by the ODOT Transportation System Plan Guidelines, ORS Rev. Statute, ORS 197.712, and the Land, uh, Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, administrative rule known as the Transportation Planning Rule, TPR OAR 660012, Tag 0015. And whereas, based on the facts presented in the public hearings and set forth in the findings of fact, the Oak Ridge City Council hereby accepts the recommended amendments to be made to the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan to continue its compliance with state law and statewide planning goals. Now, therefore, as the City of Oak Ridge ordains as follows, Section 1, the findings as set forth in Exhibit 1 are hereby adopted as a basis for this land use ordinance. Section 2, Oak Ridge's TSP attached here to, as Exhibits 1 and 2 are hereby incorporated into this ordinance by reference will be used to guide transportation planning in Oak Ridge. Section 3, Ordinance Number 550, the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan is hereby amended to replace the existing transportation goals, comprehensive plans, Section 3 with TSP goals, Exhibit 1. Section 4, Ordinance Number 550, the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan is hereby amended as set forth in Exhibit 1 to replace Section 5A entitled Transportation, the following sections of the Oak Ridge TSP, Chapter 2, Goals and Policies, Chapter 3, Roadway Plan, Chapter 4, Safety Plan, Chapter 5, Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, Chapter 6, Transit Plan, Chapter 7, Rail, Air, Bridge, Marine and Pipeline Plan, and Supporting Figures and Tables. Section 5, the, the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan is hereby amended to modify goals and policies found in the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan as necessary to maintain consistency between the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan and the TSP. Separability that provisions of this ordinance are separable. In any section, sentence, clause, phrase of this ordinance is judged by any court of competent jurisdiction or by the Land Conservation Development Commission to be invalid. The declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of the ordinance adopted as, counsel this day of blank 2020, signed by the mayor, tested to by the city recorder. And that's the reading of the ordinance.
I have to read it by title again.
I have one question. I just wanted to clarify, in there, there was the date of July 16th, 2000. Is that the correct date? I'm just making sure it's the right one. Or that it's not a typo?
It's in a whereas.
It's a typo.
Right there.
It is a typo?
Yes.
Okay, can we just see that that's corrected? Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
So I have a question. Um, we made the motion and the motion was seconded, but I don't recall us voting on it before reading this.
No, we didn't.
So should we have voted on that before we read this?
No, now, now we vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Let's call for a vote, please.
Counsel McCollum?
Aye.
Counsel Corcom?
Aye.
Counsel Kenyon?
Nay.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counsel Whitney?
Aye.
Counsel Harlett?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, Council. Um, now we'll go back to, um, what would be 13-1 and 13-2, um, ordinances 932 and 933.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes.
Well, one, we needed to read it by title a second time.
Correct.
And then the second part of it was I move we enact ordinance 936.
I'm sorry. Thank you, John. Thank you, Chrissy. You're exactly right.
Except that it's.
We, we need to read.
That I.
Title. Just the title.
Okay.
I actually opposed of that and that's why we didn't read it by title only.
Let's go ahead and read the title, please.
Ordinance number 936, an ordinance to repeal ordinance 840 and adopting the Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan, amending the Oak Ridge Comprehensive Plan, ordinance number 550.
I move we enact ordinance 936.
I second that. Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Counsel Kenyon?
Nay.
Counsel Corcom?
Aye.
Counsel Harlett?
I guess I'm confused on where we're at and which part we're voting on.
We're voting to enact the ordinance.
Right. We voted to, to accept the ordinance, now we're going to enact it.
Yay, or yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Hooray.
Counsel Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Yes.
Counsel McCollum?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Now we will move on. And thank you, Counsel Chris, uh, Harlett and Counsel McCollum for keeping that on task. Um, 13-1 and 13-2. Brian, will you explain what we're doing here?
So, uh, the staff report and the, the documentation that the planning commission and the city council viewed when they passed the, uh, the rezoning for, uh, the OIP lots, there were three that were misidentified and this came up as, as I had, uh, LCOG redo the zoning map, we, we came across the difficulties. So what this is doing is correcting the original ordinance to correct those tax assessor's map number to properly, uh, place the rezoning. So, um, it's called a Scrivener's error and this merely changes the original ordinance to amend it to fix those, uh, those items. Um, I'll, I'll take responsibility for this. I, I should have read the planning department's documentation, but a little more closely, but it, with all those, uh, tax lot numbers, it got a little excessive, confusing. But in any case, these are to correct those errors.
So, so just so that I'm clear, these are just correcting numbered errors? That it's not correcting, uh, size of lots or, or anything else? It's just the?
Right.
It's like textual?
The tax numbers, those, those digit, those, uh, eight-digit numbers you see?
Yeah.
They, they identify each parcel of land within the city and it's filed with the county. And so they were incorrectly numbered. And so all it's doing is, is correctly numbering the, the lots that you intended to rezon.
Okay, I understand. All right, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Are all of the, is errors, Scrivener's errors different than the ones that we adjusted last time?
I don't remember here.
We, we didn't.
Did we table this at a different meeting? Tabled this at a different meeting and it's been brought up now?
It's, I think it's been tabled twice due to the wrong, it's the exact same ordinance, though, that nothing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, again, this, this is thirteen one and thirteen two. And we're recommending, your options here again are the same as before, fully and distinctly read the ordinance on two different days before enactment, read the ordinance by title only if no council request it be read in full, or enact the ordinance in a single meeting by unanimous vote providing the ordinance is first read in full and then by title. We're recommending three, staffs are recommending three again, and the motions before you.
Thank you.
I move to adopt ordinance nine thirty-four slash nine thirty-five at a single reading, read by title, and then in full.
Second.
Thank you, Brian, will you read the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. So, one of the comprehensive plan and one of them is a zoning, so I'm going to read, they read exactly the same, so I'm going to read one of them, and if you want me to read the second one, I will, but they all are the same except for the difference in the two plans. So this is nine thirty-four, and ordinance, amending ordinance number nine thirty-two to correct a Scrivener's error in the map and tax lot number. Whereas on August twentieth, twenty twenty, the council adopted ordinance nine thirty-two, which became effective on September twentieth, twenty twenty, and whereas ordinance nine thirty-two adopted a comprehensive plan, map amendment of property located at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park from heavy industrial, I two, the mixing, mixed use MU, and to parks, recreation, and open spaces, PRO. And whereas, an incorrect map and tax lot number was used for two tax lots in the adopted zone amendment ordinance. And whereas, the council wishes to correct the error in the map and tax lot number. Now, therefore, the City of Oak Ridge ordains as follows, section one, ordinance number nine thirty-two is amended as follows, tax lot twenty-nine hundred, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five fifteen zero zero, as identified in ordinance nine thirty-two for lot twenty-four of the Oak Ridge Industrial Park's first addition subdivision, is deleted and replaced with tax lot twenty-eight hundred, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five twenty-two twenty. B, tax lot thirty-four hundred, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five twenty zero zero, as identified in ordinance nine thirty-two for lot thirty-nine of the Oak Ridge Industrial Park's first addition subdivision, is deleted and replaced with tax lot thirty-four hundred, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five twenty-two twenty. C, tax lot two thousand, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five twenty-two twenty, as identified in ordinance number nine thirty-two for lot three of the Oak Ridge Industrial Park First Edition subdivision, is deleted and replaced with tax lot two thousand, assessors map twenty-one thirty-five fifteen zero zero. Section four, except to the extent amended by this ordinance, ordinance nine thirty-two remains in full force and effect, adopted by the city council. Does the council wish me to read ordinance nine thirty-five? It reads exactly the same way, except for this changes the zoning map amendment instead of the comprehensive plan.
I am fine. Is, does any counselor object to that? Okay.
It's exactly the same.
Yeah, it's the same change. Same mistakes were made throughout the two documents.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Excellent. Oh, kidoki then. So let's vote on that. We call for a vote, and then we'll do the enactment.
We gotta read by title again.
Sorry. Thank you, John.
Nine thirty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance nine thirty-two to correct a Scrivener's error in the map and tax lot number.
Thank you. All right, Jackie, call for a vote.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Forecom?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor McCollum?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
That passes, counsel, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And at this point, we will move into any public comment that we may have. Brian, do we have any visitors still in the whack?
Yes, ma'am, we have one that wishes to comment.
Okay.
You got me from there, don't you, right?
Can you hear, Audi?
Yeah, actually, I can hear you. No, Paul can't, so Audi, you're going to have to get closer to the mic. Thank you.
Audi Spleedoff, four seven five eight seven, Teller Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon.
Go ahead.
I've been asked to do some volunteer holiday spirit, as you say, Santa Claus for the different people.
Yes.
And the way I used to do it all the time was I would have the people make donations, and then I would donate to a charitable cause. I would like to do this, and how do I go to tell them that it's a donation to Tots for Toys?
How have you done it in the past?
Well.
Oh, you, you would like their donation.
Did it in Portland for a lot of different places, and it wasn't for Tots for Toys.
Well, that's a, that's not a, a council thing, if you want to do that as an individual, and.
I can give you the contact, Audi.
There you go. Chrissy, you have Toys for Tots contact?
Yeah, I'll send it to him.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's how I work it, it's, it's a total donation and.
Sweet.
The only reason I do it, I do it for the kids and adults.
So, well, thank you.
No gain for me, it's just.
Yeah.
The Christmas spirit.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thanks, Santa.
Yeah. Oh, oh, oh. Is there anyone else at the whack, Brian?
Nothing here.
Okay, and I don't see anybody online, but if there is, please unmute yourself and say hello, and we'll be happy to, to hear your comments.
Kathy, it's Sissy Ketchin again.
Yes, please, go ahead.
One, I want to thank council for passing that. The other thing is, on the news tonight, they said small towns are the number one place where this COVID is going crazy in America. So these little rural communities are at very high risk, and I just would like to put that out there and on the record that we really all need to make an extra effort, and this thing is real.
Yes.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you, Sissy. Counselor McClellan?
So before we get too far gone and whatnot, did we need to make a motion to enact those ordinances so that we don't find out that we didn't enact them, and then have to go through all this again in another meeting?
John, did we not do that? Jackie, did we not do the?
Not make a motion to enact?
I don't think so, because I was.
Okay, Jackie. John, go for it.
I move we enact ordinance nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five.
I second.
Thank you, Chrissy. Jackie, would you please call the vote?
Counselor McClellan?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Did everybody? Did we hit everybody?
No.
Good.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor McClellan?
Okay, yeah, you sound like you're underwater, Jackie, but that's okay. Oh, good, thank you, then that passes. Is there any other comments from council? Um, I, just, go ahead, Chrissy.
I have one, sometimes we don't have a council meeting the last, the third Thursday of December, and I am curious if that is not going to be a meeting for that second council meeting in December.
I would actually like to leave that open. If it turns out that we don't have any business on the seventeenth, that is our last council meeting for Counselor Forecom. And normally, at that time, I would be bringing him a bottle of whiskey, but I'm not going to do that, and we can't share it with ourselves and toast him for being a four-year term who has completed his councils, so I'm very proud of him. So can we leave the seventeenth just open and say, if it turns out we don't have any pressing business, we will cancel it?
Sure, maybe we could decide at next meeting.
Yeah, maybe we can decide next meeting and see how things are, are progressing, just in case. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, everybody, this has been a, this has been a working.
John's trying to wave at you.
John, John, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Why, why does the city always go cut down a tree instead of planting one there?
I agree. I can probably answer that, John.
A living Christmas tree.
So, John, just a couple years ago, there was actually a bank there, and it caught on fire, and that would be why there isn't a large tree, but I absolutely think that's a great idea.
Why don't they dig one up and plant it there, and then you always have it in
Digging, digging a tree up of a size is not a, probably a, a good thing, but there's no reason why we can't consider actually planting a new tree there and watching it grow.
Yeah, anyway.
We've actually decorated in the past the live tree that was across from City Hall.
That's right.
Not City Hall, more like across from maybe the corner.
The community I grew up in had a living Christmas tree in the middle of downtown, and it was always looked on fondly.
Looked on fondly. Well, you know, I think that's a really good suggestion, and I think we should really pursue that, you know, if, once we get through this holiday, and maybe do something different for, for next year. I've often wondered what, if there wasn't something at Green Waters that was, that would be appropriate, although those trees are pretty big, I suppose. But yeah, where, where we could gather also. Good idea.
Um, cap, this is Bobby.
Yeah.
So, um, just something different to throw out there. So as an employee with senior disability services, I come across emails where they have information about different holiday boxes or just different resources for people, and I've been forwarding some of those on. If any of you would like any of that information, let me know, or if you would like me to start forwarding it to Kathy and Brian and ask them to send it out to our group, we can do that as well. It's just, I know we all have people that ask questions, so it's always nice to have resources and different things we can give them if we have it.
Let's do that, Bobby, just send it on to, you send them usually to me and Brian, and just start popping them on to everybody else. Counselor Kenyon?
Just blind copy everybody, though, to keep it from being any sort of.
Just go ahead and send it to Brian, I think he has a, has a quick button that just sends it off to everybody.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great, because I'm always running into little things.
Yeah, no, good idea. Counselor Kenyon, I saw your hand wiggling.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the new little buildings, I guess they're called, that we're going to be using. The women's shelter. Is that gonna, sorry?
No, it's okay. I'm getting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said three times.
It's a pallet shelter.
Okay, thank you. The, is that going to change the need for overnight volunteer staff?
Um, you know, we're going to talk about that tomorrow, and once we see them, so what the, what the idea is, and we're going to be talking to Peggy and Pat about this, who are kind of doing the warming centers, we'll still need to have volunteer staff. We can still provide, you know, the crock pot of food like we have, to be able to provide some, a warm meal for anybody that comes. So the, that, that will hold up to three people, those, those pallet shelters, one in each, obviously, we can't double them up, and we'll use those first. If we have overflow, we will definitely use the whack. So as far as how it's going to be staffed, I believe Brian's, the intention is to put, to get one of those little closed cameras so that we can watch it from inside, because the protocol that we have now, as you know, Don, and I'll just explain it to the others, you know, that when someone comes, they bring a backpack, that backpack, it gets, it's checked in, we keep the backpack, and then the individual is, goes into the sleeping room. They don't have access to their backpacks, because we don't want any contraband coming in. So we'll do the same thing, we'll check at the backpacks, they'll go out, they'll go to their shelter, but we'll have a camera so someone will be able to watch. So I don't know that if it's going to reduce the actual number, but it will reduce the amount of cleaning, for one, that we'll have to do. Obviously, they'll be, have to be cleaned inside, but it'll be a matter of removing the linen and spraying it down with a disinfectant. So we have yet to work that out, Don, and I know that there'll be, I think we're going to try to do a Zoom meeting with all of the volunteers who, for the warming center, and just kind of go over the new steps or new protocol and ask questions and get people familiar with it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, good question, though. I know, I wondered the same thing, would we need the same amount of people, and I think we definitely want two people, no one wants to spend the night there by themselves. I wouldn't think it would be safe, five of them, so. Okay. Anything else, counsel, before we adjourn at nine oh six? All right, then, have a good evening, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor?
Oh, bye.
Sorry.
Matt?
Trudy had one question, if you want to entertain it.
Oh, sure, go ahead, quickly.
I was wondering about the evac plan, if that had an evacuation that also included the animals in the community that the U of O and the Lane County is working on for the City of Oak Ridge.
They just started, so that will definitely be something that we will mention. I will make sure that that gets thrown into the mix for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, everybody, good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.